Thank you, Trevor. Hi, everyone. Just to reintroduce myself because I'm very new and I am sure not a lot of people know of me. I am Dr. Satya Sandipani Pradhana. I have recently joined as Senior Community Engagement Analyst in our Community Engagement Unit. So I am the person who is kind of managing this partner work sessions. And I have our splendid colleagues here will be supporting our presentation today. And thank you so much, all of you for spending this hour with us where we get to learn so much about what we really don't know much of, and that is how implementation is working at the field level and what, how much we can learn to make it better in the future. So thanks a lot. Today's session is, next slide please, Trevor. A little bit about the Zoom meeting tips before I go into the agenda. Please use the chat function at the bottom of your Zoom screen to share either your feedback or just if you have any question. We would like, we love our presentations to be much more interactive. So we get to learn more from you and know how to be better. As you all might be aware, we record this webinar and we also post it on YouTube. At the, within a week, we send you a follow-up email and there we send out the link to these recordings. For live captioning, please click the CC button at the bottom of your screen or click the link provided for Spanish captioning. For live interpretation help, please click on the interpretation, which is kind of a globe at the bottom between show captions and between reactions option. Thank you. Now, next slide please. As usual, we are doing our group polls to know more about where our partners are coming from. If we don't know or if we are lacking in such certain areas and how we can strengthen our reach into those areas. So we, let's go to the first poll. This is the county or region poll. If you could please attend to this. How many have we received? Do you have any idea, Trevor? I cannot see that on my screen. I should be waiting for a little bit more time.
Looks like we're about 60%. So if we can get to just around 70, 75, we can share the results and then move on to the sector poll.
Perfect. Thank you.
I see some folks are still joined. We'll get it just another 30 seconds.
Awesome.
Yep.
That's great. Thank you. As we can see, Multnomah County is the most represented, followed by Lynn and Lincoln Counties. We also have State, Washington, which is about 10, with 10% of our participants. Great. Thank you. Now let's go to the second poll, please. Here, these are the sectors that you are aligned with or are working with. This will help us right now. We are conducting a partner mapping. This will help us learn more about the sectors you are in. And if we are missing out on some from those sectors and we can also probably seek your support in the future in reaching out to more people you might be aware of. So please do attend to this sector poll.
Okay, looks like we're at almost 70%. We'll give it another 30 seconds. We'll show the results and then we'll proceed with the rest of the presentation. But like Satya mentioned, thank you all for participating in these polls and it does help us with our analysis on how we can do a better job of, of reaching our partner.
Great. Thanks a lot. We do have some 13% from Behavioral Health Services. That is a sector we are trying to reach out to more because of our services, which have a huge behavioral health element in them. So thanks a lot. Please let your colleagues know to attend these sessions and our OHA sessions on HRSN. We also have some colleagues from our local government. 23% are colleagues from Housing Services and Supports. We have few nutrition partners. That's great. Thanks a lot. Let's go to the next slide, please. This is our today's agenda. As we sent out in our invitation, invitation emails. As always, we will be giving a little bit of 1115 waiver background. This is majorly focused at our new partners who are joining in for the first time or people who did not know or wherever we can add to some knowledge gap here. Then we'll be focusing on HRSN, that is Health Related Social Needs Housing Services Eligibility, followed by Health Related Social Needs Outreach and Engagement Services Eligibility. And then we'll talk a little bit more, talk on Community Capacity Building Fund Survey. This is a new addition and it's an interesting survey that will go live very soon. And then we'll have question and answer session, but you are all, all very welcome to write your question and questions in the chat because our subject matter experts who are there can also provide answers while our presentation is continuing. Next slide please, Trevor. Little bit of Medicaid overview, our next one. As we all know, in Oregon, we called, we call Medicaid as the Oregon Health Plan. And Medicaid is the nation's medical assistance program for people. So this is jointly managed by the federal government and the state government. More about Oregon Health Plan. It's a free health coverage for children, teens and adults who live in Oregon and meet some income and other criteria. People can apply for OHP at any time during the year. Next one, please. So what is 1115 Medicaid waiver, the one that I talked about at the beginning of the agenda? So the federal government has a standard set of rules that each state must follow when they, when they implement Medicaid. But they also give a little bit of freedom to each state to make programs or to design programs that are more attuned to the needs of the specific population of the state. And that's where we comes in the 1115 waiver. And the state has to take permission from the federal government to tweak these rules for these specific programs. Oregon's new 1115 Medicaid waiver. As we know, there are many waivers, there are many plans within these Medicaid waivers. So what the newest one is Health Related Social Needs or HRSN in short. And today we are talking about that. This is an OHP covered benefit. So next one, please. Just to give a little bit of overview of the service areas that are included within the Health Related Social Need Services. As you can see, there are four tabs here. The first one is climate. Most of you are probably aware of the climate services because they became live, they went live on March 1st of this year and are already serving people. So these climate services include air conditioners for heart, heat risks, air filtration devices to protect against wildfire smoke, portable heaters, a mini refrigeration units for medications and portable power supplies to operate medical devices during power outages. Similarly, we also have housing services that will go live in November 1st. So these housing support focuses on members who need support to maintain current housing. So those who are at risk of houselessness. Eligible members could be connected to rental, rental utilities and storage fee assistance and tenancy support services within this housing services. We will also have nutrition-related, health-related social needs services, which will go live next year in January. These supports would include medically tailored meals for specific health conditions, funds to buy groceries or hot meals, funds to buy produce and nutrition education. And outreach and engagement, which can be seen as a service, HRSN service that underlies all of these. That is kind of the connector and knowledge provider and support system for all of these. These supports include outreach and linkages to other Medicaid or non-Medicaid benefits, especially for individuals with eligible HRSN population, within eligible HRSN population. And we'll talk more about what these eligible HRSN population mean as we progress through the slides. Thanks a lot, Trevor. Can we go to the next slide, please? Now I'll hand it over to my colleague, Callie Glenn-Haley for HRSN eligibility. Thanks, Callie.
Yeah, thanks, Satya. Good afternoon, everyone. So we've presented on housing eligibility in the past, but we've made some updates to kind of streamline things as well as added some new dimensions. So wanted to come back and go over it again. Next slide, please. So to be eligible for rental assistance, utilities assistance, utility startup costs and tenancy support services, which is essentially case management support. A person must be currently housed and needs support maintaining their current housing. And we've defined that as some sort of an arrangement with a lease or written agreement with a landlord or the person or company that an individual is renting from. And, and in the past, we've talked about meeting the at-risk definition. That's still true, but we wanted to streamline that definition a bit. So we, we've, we're presenting it as having an income that is 30% or less than the area median income according to HUD. And lacks sufficient resources or support networks to prevent homelessness and has a housing clinical risk factor. So those three things are how OHA is interpreting the at-risk of homelessness definition by HUD. So the income component of 30% or less of the AMI, lacking sufficient resources or support networks to preventing homelessness and then having a clinical risk factor, which I'll go into. Also want to just flag in this definition, you'll notice, oh, I'm sorry, could you please go back to the? Yes, that we are taking a preventative approach here. So we want to support people who are currently housed to maintain their current housing. And the reason why we kind of honed in on prevention is because, as you all know, Oregon has a lack of affordable housing in the state. The homelessness services system has the coordinated entry platform. And when we were looking to get these services out by November 1st, we realized more discussion is really needed to think through how we would, how we would incorporate new housing into, into this, this benefit. So that's the eligibility criteria for rental assistance, utilities assistance. I'll note for utilities, to receive utilities assistance, you must also be receiving rent assistance with the exception of utility startup costs, not to be too confusing, but that, that's kind of separate. And then tenancy support services. If we go to the next slide. All right. So eligibility for HRSN home modifications and remediation services. This is also for November 4th, or I'm sorry, 1st, and I'm just looking at the, the chat. Yeah. And so Howard writes about looking for lacking sufficient resources. That's a self-attestation that someone does not have the resources or support networks to prevent homelessness. So it would be a self-attestation. And I think current housing providers do kind of work through different options with clients and to determine that they, that they don't have sufficient resources. Yeah. And then at a minimum, for how long someone has to be in the current unit? No, there's no minimum. Great question, but we are asking for kind of a lease or written agreement. And it doesn't have to be a formal lease, but some form of written agreement between the tenant and the, the individual or company that they're renting from. So. Okay, so pivoting to, but please keep on putting questions in the chat. Happy to answer them. I'll just go over the eligibility for HRSN home modifications and remediation services. So if you've been attending these sessions, you know that this eligibility framework is a bit complicated and we are working on an information product, something written that will prevent, present all of this in a clear way. So appreciate your patience. But home modifications and remediation services have a different eligibility, different eligibility criteria than the other HRSN housing services. And the reason for that is because HRSN home modifications and remediation is more to address a clinical need than it is to prevent homelessness. So therefore, since the objective is different, the eligibility is different. So to, to be eligible for these services, we're saying a clinical risk factor and belong to one or more of the HRSN transition populations. So this is, and you may already be aware of them, someone who is released from incarceration in the last 12 months, discharged from a residential mental health facility, current or past involvement with the Oregon Child Welfare System, changing from Medicaid only to dual. So that's Medicaid and Medicare, which is for the public health insurance program for older Americans. And kind of our, the way we're framing the HUD at-risk definition, which is, has an income of 30% or less than the AMI and lacks sufficient resources or support networks to prevent homelessness. And then, so if someone has a clinical risk factor, they're part of one of these transition populations. The next step would be the attestation or the linkage, whether it's a doctor's, a doctor's note or, or a self-attestation, that the modification or remediation service would in fact address the, the clinical risk factor, the health need. I'll also just note that at this time, we are, so for home modifications, we were covering grab bars, drawer pulls and ramps. And for remediation services, we're covering pest eradication, chore services or heavy-duty cleaning and the installation of synthetic blinds to prevent allergens. So I'll just look at the chat. So Rebecca, great point. Yes, the security deposit and move-in fees were for people who are, were moving to a new location. And since we are honing in on currently housed as a preventative approach, we aren't offering those services on November 1st. But we, we will, we do anticipate expanding out to additional populations over the course of the demonstration. And so then those would be back in play. And then Rebecca Martin writes, past due rent or moving forward. So great question. So we are having six months total in both rental assistance and utilities. And it can be any combination of past due amounts or kind of moving forward amounts. So it could be three months of arrears plus three months ongoing, five months in arrears, one month ongoing. So any combination up to six months total. People do not have to have an eviction notice to benefit from this program. They certainly could, although I would note that they would have to flag the urgency of how fast it would need to get approved and really work with the CCO to make sure that that's well understood. But it can also be more, and I think the best use for this would be more of an anticipatory, like, you know, a kid is sick or a, a health condition happens and working to get this, this benefit in place. For Marcia, that's a great question. I think that that's out of my area of expertise in terms of the 16 beds. I think that that's like a federal designation of what a mental, mental health facility is according to our federal partners, but someone else could chime in if they know that. And Howard, yes, so the at-risk of homelessness definition by HUD, so HUD is considered, or I'm sorry, the at-risk of homelessness population is, is considered a transition population and having 30% or less AMI and a lack of resources to prevent homelessness and having a clinical risk factor altogether is how OHA has streamlined that definition for this particular program. Next slide, please. Great. Okay, so on the, the right, you'll find the clinical risk factors. So complex behavioral health need, developmental disability need, complex physical health need, needs assistance with ADLs or IADLs, so assist, assistance with daily living, current or past interpersonal violence experience, repeated emergency department use, repeated crisis encounters, currently pregnant or, or postpartum, less than six years of age or more than 65 years of age. So those are the clinical risk factors. Next slide. So examples of potentially eligible people. OHP member with a chronic health disease is behind on rent due to a job loss and requires rental assistance until they get a new job. Someone who's experienced a acute medical incident and such as a hospitalization or broken leg and requires rental assistance. Someone who's doubled up and requires rental assistance to stay in that housing, who also has a, a clinical risk factor. A member, OHP member who has trouble keeping up the condition of their home and therefore requires the mediation service of heavy cleaning to maintain housing. And a five-year-old with special healthcare needs who needs their parent to take time off work to support those needs. So these are all examples of potentially eligible people. Next slide. And I will pass it to Teresa.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Teresa Young White, she/her/hers. I am with the waiver team and I work on the outreach and engagement benefit. This is one of the HRSN services that's live right now and has been since March 1st along with climate. And then there will actually be expanded list of activities and we'll talk about them in just a sec that will go live with housing in November and continue through with nutrition in January. So the outreach and engagement benefit is intended to identify members that are part of these populations that Callie talked a lot about. So for outreach and engagement, it's all populations. So that would include homeless folks who maybe aren't eligible for the housing benefit or most of the housing, yeah, the housing benefit, but they're still eligible for outreach and engagement services. So it's all of those populations. What CMS calls the transitions population, those in major life transitions. And I'm not sure who's sharing the screen because we had some things, but we are in a weird, it's, it's moving around a little bit. So where we see the partner work session slides, but not on the full screen and not on the slides that I'm speaking to. So we'll get that taken care of really quick. Sorry, folks. So, and you said I'm hard to hear, huh? All right. I did have a little fan on here. I turned that off. Is that any better? I'll try to speak up because Kathy in the chat, Abby said, okay. So the outreach and engagement benefit is really intended to get people connected, yes, to those HRSN services that they might use, need like climate, housing or nutrition, but also to connect them to other services. So other resources they could use and that could be not even healthcare services. It could be social, peer, legal services. So it's really intended to help bring those supports at the community-based organization level where people are being seen and being helped. And it's really intended to help get them connected to all of the different things they need. So looking at them as that whole person that we talked about. Next slide, please. Okay, so what are the activities? So a lot of folks on here are probably from organizations that may end up being an HRSN service provider. And you may already do outreach and engagement activities with members. So for you, this is opening that you could start billing for these services, getting paid maybe in a different way. If you don't get paid for this at all, maybe being able to get paid for some of the work you do to support Oregon Health Plan members. For other HRSN service providers, it could be something that you want to expand the services and say, hey, we can start working with our members a little bit more comprehensively because we're able to get paid for some of these services and maybe hire someone that can help support them. So the activities that you can get paid for are listed here. So for the March 1 launch, it's quite a bit different. It's really specific to helping a member get connected to the HRSN services for climate. So it's sending that request to their coordinated care organization or open card if they don't have a coordinated care organization. And it's being paid for the work that is, goes into that. So verifying their enrollment perhaps, actually connecting with the member, talking with the member, sitting there and, and getting their information. And then there's that piece that I talked about earlier that's really important is maybe they are in need of connecting to legal aid in the region. And so you hope support them getting that. And that takes some time to help set up appointments for them and, and get them there, or it could be other things as well. For November, it opens up a little bit more. It still is focused on connecting members, Oregon Health Plan members to these other services and to HRSN services. But it's a little bit more specific about how you can, specific and broad at the same time. So connecting them to food supports like SNAP, TAMP, WIC for women, infants and children. And I think the acronyms were at the bottom of this one and they're, they're blocked off. So I'll put them in the chat or if someone wants to help me out and put TAMP, WIC and SNAP in the chat. That would actually be really appreciated because they do not like using acronyms without spelling them out here. So I apologize for that. So that is part of it. It could be going to the DMV with them or supporting them, getting an appointment with the DMV and getting a license. Maybe they need, or some sort of identification. Maybe, maybe they need help with that in order to be able to get a job or connect, you know, and other services. So. in order to be able to get a job or connect, you know, and other services. So other things are accessing shower, laundry, shelter, food. Any, any of those services that are really needed to help the basic level of need for these members. Another piece is that if there are applications they need to pay, to have, that have fees, maybe there are things. There's not a whole lot of federal and state government programs that have fees. But maybe there are fees associated with some of the needs they have and you can help support them, pay those, those fees for them and then get reimbursed as well. So there's a lot of different activities really intended to support these members in those covered populations. Trevor, I really appreciate you putting the acronyms there. Thank you. Okay, next slide, please. Just really quickly, the procedure code associated with HRSN outreach and engagement is listed here. And how you bill that is on a 15 minute basis. So if you spend an hour with a member, you would bill four units at the price of $20 per unit. So that's $80 an hour or $20 for 15 minutes, depending on how you bill there. Okay, next slide, please. We just wanted that for information. We're not really talking about that in depth today, though. So here's where this might be confusing for folks, but we wanted to bring it here to you and I hope I can explain it. Because we wanted to get your feedback on a couple of things. So right now, in order to receive outreach and engagement services beyond an initial discussion, so in order to receive, you know, a full six months of outreach and engagement services and in order for that HRSN service provider to bill, a climate device has to be authorized at some point. So you would have to be saying, okay, I'm helping this member. I turned in an HRSN request form for an air conditioner and they were approved. So I can keep helping them connect to other resources. If you helped a member connect and they got denied for an air conditioner because they didn't have the clinical risk factor potentially, then you wouldn't be able to keep getting paid for outreach and engagement services. So in November, when we go live, this is our proposed approach is actually to kind of take, take it out and say, okay, outreach and engagement is actually a standalone benefit. And what that means is we would, or you would as an HRSN service provider or a member would be receiving services for outreach and engagement. And there wouldn't actually have to be an authorization for climate or housing in November. So what, what that would look like is yes, they have to be an Oregon Health Plan member. They need to be presumed eligible or self attest. So tell you that they're in one of these populations. They do have a clinical risk factor. And again, that's what's presumed eligible. So they say, yeah, a clinical risk factor, you know, I have asthma or I have a health, a health issue that could be made better by, by, you know, receiving these HRSN services. And then the social risk factor, which is just, they need support and they need that outreach and engagement services. They need those activities I talked about on the last slide. So essentially what that would do is you would help the member submit, well, you would verify their enrollment with a coordinated care organization or with open card. And then you would talk to that health plan and say, I have this member, here's a request. I want to help them with outreach and engagement services. I want to help them connect to legal aid, like I talked about, or to the Department of Motor Vehicles, the DMV, et cetera. And the CCO on open card would basically say, yes, go ahead and, and work on that. So we're going to talk a little bit about whether that's authorization or not in a minute. That's one of the questions on the table. But then you could just keep helping the member. They wouldn't have to get a climate device or help with housing in order to receive these services. So next slide, and then it might make a little bit more sense. So what we want to talk about today, ask you if you have any feedback or help with this, is if we moved this to sort of a standalone outreach and engagement benefit, would we want to follow the other services type climate, housing and nutrition that require authorization? So at that point, where the HRSN service provider is requesting outreach and engagement services from the health plan, they would have to authorize that. So have, you know, on this two week timeline saying, yes, okay, and here, here you go. Here's the number of hours that you can spend with the member. We have authorized this. Or we can go a different route and we can say, there's no authorization necessary as long as this member has said they're in this covered population, et cetera. And you communicate with the CCO that you are helping them by sending a request form in. Then it's just, yes, you know, you can keep helping this member unless you hear differently from the CCO, I suppose. Maybe if it wasn't an Oregon Health Plan member could be a potential. So we're thinking of that in order to really reduce these barriers for our members to receive these much needed connections to other resources as well as support our HRSN service providers in not having to go seek authorization and have this timeline be followed that could potentially be a barrier for the member to come back. So, okay, we have to wait for authorization. Come back here when we get that and then I'll continue to help you. So that's, that's our logic there is reducing barriers. So I was hoping that anybody that had any feedback on this would, would help us out here and I'll look at the chat too. Oh, great question, Howard. Right now we have either a 10 hour per six month limit on outreach and engagement hours or 20 hours per year. We hadn't fully decided on that piece either, but it should be equal out to about 20 hours per year. And same Rebecca as well. That would be 20 hours. And the second Rebecca on there, getting the authorization is hopefully quick with health plans. So it's written that they need to approve or deny as expeditedly, expeditiously as possible. However, they do have two weeks for just a normal authorization. And then there is some room for an extension, but that's only if they can't get the information that they need for some reason. And the hopes would be that that would be pretty rare for something like outreach and engagement. Thank you. Thank you, Howard. Oh, Laura first, I missed that. Laura says offering O and E as a standalone is much preferred. It would be hard for providers to keep it all straight. I just, absolutely. That's one of the things that we were told and we were trying to be responsive of saying, okay, how, how do they know they can bill? How do they track this, et cetera? And tracking could still be a little iffy. But we are making sure that our CCOs have an exception process for members. And again, this is not an authorization process, but this would be an exception process to go over those 20 hours as well. So if they see a member that is in need, or if a multiple HRSN service providers are helping a member, they can continue to pay over the 20 hours as long as they review that on a case by case scenario. Okay, great. That's a lot of feedback and support as a standalone benefit in the chat. I really appreciate that. Is there any differing opinions? Because just really want to hear all opinions here. And I want that to be a safe place for that if needed. And then of course, any other ideas or thoughts on this would be much welcome as well. And I know that's hard in the moment, so. I'll stop for just a second, but please email me later if you have anything as well. Okay, great. Thank you all so much. That was short and to the point. And I just really appreciate it. Kind of went the way that I thought it would in a good way. And I really think it's going to help us support, you know, removing some of those barriers for people that, that need some help with this. So really great. And I believe it's going over to VISA for the Community Capacity Building Funds next. If you want to go to the next slide. Thank you all.
Great. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. Hi, everyone. Lisa Kroy. I am back. We have participated in this space several times to talk about the Community Capacity Building Funds Grant Program. I am, I did not put an overview slide in here because I knew I wasn't going to have a lot of time, but I am going to put in the chat the link to the website if anyone wants to find out some more information about this program. The application window has closed, so it closed at the end of last month. So as you can see in our program timeline on the screen, we are in the process right now where CCOs are reviewing those applications. And so we're at a pretty exciting milestone. We're getting closer to being able to release those funds. I want to go to the next slide, which is really what I'm here to promote, I could say. We are going to conduct a survey and we are going to survey all of the organizations that apply for funds, whether or not they're going to receive a grant or not. But we'd also like to hear from organizations, either A, that did not hear about the opportunity ahead of the window closing, the application window closing, or B, decided not to apply. We'd like to hear from all of those types of organizations, what the experience was, what influenced your decisions. That would be very helpful. We're going to use the information that we get from you as well as we are going to survey the CCOs about their process to really inform how we manage the program for 2025. So we know there's always room for improvement. There are things that we can change next year and there are things that we are not able to change. But we certainly want to understand what the experience is and where, in the areas that we can improve, what, what we should do to make improvements. So we will share the link to the survey. We are going to release the survey in two weeks. And we will share that link with all of you that have participated in this meeting series and hope that you will complete it. Again, feedback is really helpful for us to make improvements. So that is really it. I'm not going to go through the information on the slide. I'll just share that with everyone. It's a very short survey, so hopefully we are looking at opportunity to provide a gift card. If you do fill out the survey, but again, really appreciate time, your time and your feedback to make improvements. So thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Can we go to the next slide, please, Trevor? So these are a list of our current communication products that we already have. So that you all can refer to this whenever there are any challenges you are facing. And also please feel free to provide us your feedback on, on these products if we need more information and what kind of information so we can strive to make this better. On this, we have the Charison webpage, the provider webpage that will have beneficial information for the providers. You also have provider qualification, fact sheet and climate benefit webpage. Can we go to the next slide, please? Now I open up this platform for any question and answer. Please feel free to unmute yourself and ask your questions. Our subject matter experts are here to give you the best possible answer. So Howard has a question. Do you have any idea when you will finalize the housing and outreach engagement benefit parameters? I think this is for Teresa and Callie and Lisa too.
Thanks, Howard. Yeah, so we're coming down the homestretch. And I think Tris, I'm not sure if you have off the top of your head, when the service descriptions will be finalized. We're looking to release information products, though, over the course of the summer on the 1115 website, which would include kind of our process for these benefits as well as more detailed service descriptions of each benefit. So over the course of the summer, we'll be releasing the written products.
If I could just ask, Colleen, with the idea that they'll be released over the summer, is the idea that they would be finalized at that point? Because I'm, I'm seeing some pretty significant shifts and you know, some of the ideas here and we're, you know, we're, our agency is probably going to be interested in offering all of the benefits. And so we, we're going to want to get to a place where it's not a moving target.
Yeah, I hear you. I think that we have moved things around a bit, which I understand, I definitely recognize makes it quite difficult to prepare for offering these benefits and to decide if you want to. So I hear you on that. Yes, they would be finalized once released.
Okay, I appreciate that. Is it the same for the outreach and engagement?
Yes, and Tris, I'm going to turn it over to you if you have anything more specific to add about those release dates and outreach and engagement. If Tris is there.
I'm sorry, Kelly. I stepped away for just one sec. Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, the, the question is, are you expecting that sometime this summer that the parameters that you're, you're, right now it sounds like you've got ideas about a direction to take outreach and engagement, which I have to say that our agency would be extremely supportive of you're going that direction. I'm just interested in knowing when we would know for sure that, you know, you're, you're going this way or that way and, and how this is going to work so, so that we can start supporting clients as quickly as we're going to be able to.
Absolutely. So we are verifying with CCOs, but they're supportive of this already. I do know that. And then we'll need to go through some leadership review, but they're supportive of that as well. So I think that you can expect that we would make sure and finalize this and have all that information out to you. Probably, I would say very early July. And that's when we are kind of working on the, our contracts and making sure our guidance documents and all of that is aligned. So I think in the next month or so is when you were here for sure.
Okay, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. Jesse, your hand is up, so.
Yeah, thanks. Hi, folks. Jesse Wilson, 1115 Waiver Operations Director. I just wanted to chime in here to really appreciate the question and understand the need to provide some clarity. So I can tell you that we have a couple of other area forums for feedback before we really finalize sort of the policy here. We're having a rules advisory committee June 14th. So if you do not have the invite, which I believe if you're part of the listener of this work session, that you should have received that. But I encourage you to attend that if you're, if you're able to and provide additional feedback. So we'll go through the rules process and those rules will be effective prior to the launch of the housing benefit. But in terms of like final contract language, we, we do need to have that landed for the CCOs by the end of August. So you can expect through the summer to get some final clarity on, on the benefits here. So hopefully that's helpful, but just wanted to put in a plug for the rules advisory committee that we have this month as well.
Thank you, Jesse. We have four more minutes. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to share it with us.
So I'm going to do a quick follow up if that's okay.
Yes, please go ahead.
Just because you went through the, I mean, we had to go through the information pretty fast. On the changes with the rent assistance. So the, the 30% of AMI is, is that the, like the, the key factor? Obviously, there were some other factors in there. Do folks have to show outside of that that they have a separate health condition that requires the rent assistance? Or is it by itself the fact that they're at 30% AMI and that their housing situation is unstable? that they would qualify for that benefit?
Yeah, thanks for that. And Trevor, if it's possible, we could go back to that slide. So basically, people need to be currently housed and need support maintaining their current housing, have a clinical risk factor, whether the clinical risk factor is the driver of their housing instability or not. We don't specify. So just they have to have a clinical risk factor. 30% income at 30% of AMI. Sorry, one more or two more back.
Yes.
And they have to lack sufficient resources to be, or support networks to prevent them from becoming homeless. So the at-risk definition includes 30% or less of area median income, lacking sufficient resources or support networks to be, to prevent homelessness, have a clinical risk factor. And then we've added on that they need to be currently housed and need support maintaining their current housing.
Okay, and that goes for utility assistance as well moving forward, correct?
Yeah, it's, yes, exactly. So utilities and tenancy support services follow that. Utilities assistance, not to get too confusing, but for six months of utilities assistance, the person also needs to be receiving rental assistance to have support starting up utilities. So if someone's living in a situation[1751.31]